Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. It's great to see so many smiling faces here. We waited for you guys to do the pledge of allegiance. So everyone, rise please.
So, this is our Class of 2017 College Acceptances. It's a snapshot, the highlights of 50 schools that I chose. Just not in random order, just because some of them were ones that we know more and would have kids go to. And these are acceptances, not necessarily where they're going to attend. It's important to highlight the acceptances due to the fact that sometimes students may get a better scholarship or something to a different school. So the acceptances is where we really look at. You can see, we had one student from Valley View at Morris Hills that got accepted to all the HIBs this year at Stanford. And we also have MIT, and we have second HIV. And then I saw UCLA and Alabama, places like that, Michigan. But they were pretty, pretty great schools, but we highlighted that. Hopefully, we set the foundation for that. I thought we could take credit for all of it, but we take credit for some. Also, I just found out today, we have three of our former students from Valley View going in the military. And I'm going to reach out and see if they'd like to come and we could just meet them, congratulate them on their service to our country. So, we have these 50 plus several more with the college sentences, and then three going to the military.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Bertani, I think you guys have your presentation.
Sure. Do you want to just say anything?
Yeah, if you guys want to.
Okay. They had all of mine too.
Yeah. If you guys want to pause your presentations.
Okay. My name is Mr. Bertani. I have the pleasure of leading the PowerSave Schools for the district, more for Riverview School. I have some other fabulous teachers up here, but this is really about the students and the work that they're doing and putting in to learning about sustainability and the different avenues that sustainable education can give them as they move forward in their education. So, without further ado, I don't want to spend too much time. I'd like for it to all be about the students. So students, please come on up. And we'll have each of the students introduce themselves. So, as you can see, we have a wide range of students here from all three schools, Valley View, Lakeview, and Riverview. Up on the screen, you have the full contingent. There were a lot of students that were not able to make it here tonight due to other events. But you can see how big the program is becoming within the district and within the schools moving through both elementary as well as the middle school. I'll pass the mic to the students and have them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Abby. We are Denville Township Schools Student Green Team. This year, we had the opportunity to learn about energy sources, green energy options, ways to save energy, and even about green jobs. The team is excited about the opportunity to save our school district money and energy costs and protect the environment. Our thought is that through the cooperative, school-wide changes in behavior, we can accomplish this. Throughout the year, we have met with teachers, students, and the administration to bring our ideas to our individual schools. Through cooperation, our team believes that we can build a sustainable world, and this is our first step toward doing it. The simple reason for this is that the education is the key to our futures. This year, we learned that energy use has a direct effect on our environment. By reducing our energy usage, we help this world, we help the world be the best. The plan is to take what we have learned in school and bring it to the community. The same energy-saving ideas we incorporate in the schools can be used at home, in the community, and beyond. Thank you for having us here today and giving us the opportunity to spread what we have learned to others.
I'm Julie. It has been a lot of fun working with everyone in this school this year. We have accomplished quite a number of things as we learned and taught others. Met with great little teachers to explain what we would be doing this year, teaching about sustainability and energy use, and bringing them on board with us as we change the culture of our school. Audit every room in the school to determine right lighting and heating and cooling. Use our PowerSave instructional time to become better educated about different types of energy consumption and how it affects our world. Design a patrol contest to promote energy use within the school. Presented the patrol contest to teachers as well as students. For four weeks, we audited the classrooms to determine which rooms were being the most energy-conscious. Last week, we got to reflect our findings to the board in hopes that we will use or do that to improve the energy use in our schools.
I'm Ishika. Every classroom in each...
I'm Faith.
I'm Prachi.
You can go.
I'm Niti.
I'm Cece.
I'm Metala.
I'm Michaela.
I'm Masha. The purpose of the energy audit was to find out how much energy each room was using and whether all the energy used was actually necessary. To do the audit, we used three tools. First, we took three temperature readings with the temperature gun to find the average temperature of the room. Then we used a light meter to measure lighting levels to see if the room was over or underlit. Finally, finally, we took a cap of different appliances and devices in the classroom. Based on the readings from our watt meter, we knew which ones were wasting the most electricity. We recorded all the data we found and talked with the teacher about small things that could be done to conserve energy in their particular classroom. Twenty-seven teachers participated in our energy patrol contest. We divided their classrooms into three teams, making sure that each team represented different areas of the building, as well as a mix of large and small classrooms and related arts programs. Each room received three unannounced patrols to see whether they suggested the energy-saving protocols were being followed over the four weeks of the contest. Rooms earned points for these energy-saving actions. Some of the actions that rooms earned points for include right lighting, turning devices off or to sleep mode, and keeping doors and windows closed if the air conditioner is on. A visual reminder was left if a reminder was needed to follow a particular energy-saving suggestion. We call these energy hogs.
Hi, my name is Brendan.
I'm Laura.
I'm Kelly.
My name is Ishika. Every classroom in each grade level participated in our patrol contest. We decided that the best way to organize a school was by grade level. Each grade level's points were averaged by the number of homerooms in the grade. During the audit, a classroom earned points if the door was closed, lights were off, smart board was off, and non-teaching computers were off or put to sleep. These were the top money-saving approaches we came up with, which would help the school save on heating and air conditioning as well as electricity. The contest ended today, and we are looking forward to tabling up the results.
We would like to thank Honeywell Company and the Board of Education for all they have done to save energy and money for the Denville Schools. During 2016, 2017, Valley View PowerSave Team has contributed on reaching out to the school committee. We have accomplished this by interacting with visitors at the Valley View Green Fair, creating and displaying posters within the school, tweeting reminders to save energy, promptly saving power save through the teachers' websites for parents and the public field. We are looking forward for building any other, any even stronger, more successful team next year when the participating students from Lakeview and Riverview move up to Lakeview. Change the way the lights are wired in the classrooms. This would allow every other light in the entire classroom to be on as opposite to the section of the classroom helping achieve the best lighting for learning. Investigate, investigate use of solar panels, wind turbines, and other technology, the opposite, the co's, of not using non-green energy. Researching the purpose of additional power save equipment for use within science classes and clubs through grants and other opportunities. Begin energy audits sooner in the school year to allow more data to be collected and compared. Continue to bring the learning to the whole school. Educate teachers and custodians and other staff about saving energy both in school and at home. Hold more energy-saving contests spread throughout the year with prizes and in sense that this will help our team raise awareness within the schools.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to meet with you. We are enjoying our time with PowerSave Schools and look forward to taking our knowledge with us throughout our schooling and for several of us into a career choice. Thank you.
I'd also like to take a moment to thank the teachers that helped to make this possible initiative schools. Chris Johnson, Lydia Stiles, Kathleen Ackerman, Lindsay Harris, Todd McCabe. So if you guys could stand up. I would like to take a second to thank PowerSave Schools for their support of Denville Township Schools. They gave us the opportunity to bring a high-quality program into our district and help students learn the importance of sustainability. PowerSave has a direct connection to the district's push towards sustainability. We had the opportunity to bring this program into our schools due to the work that we have been doing with Sustainable Jersey for schools. Tonight, it is my pleasure to announce that Riverview Elementary School will be receiving the Bronze Certification from Sustainable Jersey in August. We were able to do this in no small part to the help of our students, the amazing administration from top to bottom, the excellent administrators that we have, the students that you see before you, as well as the students that are in our schools every single day. And last but not least, thank you to the board for all of your efforts as well. Without everything that you have done for us and continue to do for us, this wouldn't be possible. So we thank you for all your support and our continued successes as we move forward. Thank you.
Can we get a picture of all the teachers and the kids? Parents, okay for a picture? Anybody now? Mr. Capello is on the Green Committee for the town.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thank you. So thank you guys. Before you all go, I just want to thank you for your hard work and your recognition. We'll definitely be looking at you closely and appreciate the hard work and the enthusiasm. Thanks for coming.
And what, two years to get the Bronze, right? So this is pretty big.
Two years to get the Bronze.
Yeah, we've tried for two years and we've got it.
That's good. That's fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
How close are we in the other two?
Very.
We're closer to the other two.
Very. The sustainable policy that we're putting through today is going to be a big help for that. So thank you.
Good job. Thank you. We're going to continue on with our meeting. It's now school night, so you can leave, guys. So you're free to go.
Thank you.
Somebody left their jacket. Somebody's jacket. All right. Moving on. Do you have a council? Mr. Bertani's comments next.
So today, I met with Ross Haber to, and we just discussed a couple of things to get started with Damaris. And he will be working on a report. We should get it by the end of the week. And we will get the report to EI. EI is working on, they're visiting the districts currently. They're going to start their report, and then they'll integrate Ross's report with them. So he should have Ross's report by next week, and Ross should have his by this week. We did, we did talk a lot about how, you know, it's going to be a big range. So what he's going to do is, it's going to do pretty much for the 300. We think it's pretty close to definite. He'll have one report, and then he's going to project out 300, 600, 900, something like that. So that we can have, just have something to look at. The good news is though, that with probably some moving students around with the one by Knowles, those kids may have to be split between Lake and River. But if we, whatever, whatever project we do, we'll be able to accommodate all the students from this go-around. You know, we can't really tell if there's a thousand or 2,000 units, but from what we're building right now, we'll be able to support that. Couple of upcoming events. Lead graduation at Lakeview is May 24th. And right in this building, Valley View Mock Trial, Thursday, June 1st, 7:00 PM. Right here in this room. It's a, it's a nice thing that they do with the kids and have the town judge comes. It's nice. I came last year.
That's it, babe? That's it? That's all? Just wanted to make sure. All right. Dr. Pallas.
Yes, we had so, June and May are just exciting times. We have so many activities in the district. I just want to publicly thank all three schools for the fabulous music performances between play, both the spring concerts and recently the Village Arts Night. I remember we had it earlier. But Lakeview's was fabulous this last week. And of course, the Green Fair was recent, two-week, I think it's right now? And they just put on a fabulous show. So many exciting things for the end of the year. One other event to put on the calendar, May 31st is our NJASK Science Test. It's just one day, fourth grade and eighth grade only. Fourth grade is a one-hour test, and eighth grade is a two-hour test. And again, along with all of our spring things, I want to thank the parents that have been coming out for our informational nights. We did have one at Lakeview for our transitional primary program. And we also had 50 parents attend our Valley View Honors Biology presentation, which is significantly more than in the past. So we're excited about that. This concludes the Students' Superintendent's Report.
Damaris, Mrs. Administrator's comments, though?
I am happy to report that the university certification finally approved the lab testing of university, going back one W.1.2016, as of last Thursday. I would create a report to maybe say, and they're just working on the university. It's only for the lab testing, not the actual, the term that is set and the fewer hours of...
Right, to me, it's just a test. It's only the lab.
It's not even the cost of the consultant, it's only the cost of the lab.
The actual lab test, right.
Which is $35 a vial, so it's, it's the most substantial part.
And that one, please, Mary.
Very good job. Thank you, Patrick. Oh, did you know that, Damaris, with that amount, with the reimbursement amount?
That reimbursement was approximately 1,000 dollars.
Okay.
I don't know if we know or get all that, just, just a pool of money. We push for 10,000.
That's true. Yeah, they max that out. Okay. If there's nothing else, then we'll open up for public discussion at 7:56 PM. Any items germane to the district or on the agenda tonight? If you'd like to come up and just sign in. There is a signing sheet there. Announce your name, address, and the agenda. We'd be happy to hear from you. You'll have another chance at the end of the meeting if you'll have to wait. All right. No public comment will close also at 7:56 PM. And we will move on to the agenda. All right. Old Business Items. Mr. Laura, would you care to take us through these items we've been voting on tonight?
Certainly. I would like to move that we approve the following resolutions under Old Business. First section is A, Treasury School Money's Report and the Board Secretary Report. The second area is the Education Reports. That's student enrollment for April 2017, the medical report of April 2017. The resolution of the following HIB cases. HIB LVO6, HIB LVO7, HIB RV03, and HIB VV11. As well as, and the final report in this area is the Strategic Plan for Denville 2022. And finally, minutes for the Work Session and Executive Session of April 10th, as well as the Regular Session and Executive Session of April 24th.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll show you.
Any questions or comments on these items, please?
For B4, is that the goals that we were saying?
It's the objectives. We've already approved the goals. The objectives is the second part. So it's basically the...
Oh, underneath the...
Right.
Any other comments on that one or any of the others? I particularly like, I particularly like the creative environment and collaboration, problem-solving, creativity, refusing technology, workable, to encourage growth in the area of student rights and stuff. No, I did not. I have no pride of offer showing. I just like the way I, I thought it was actually well-crafted. And I like the, I particularly like the workable. I don't like the idea of technology just for technology's sake. So I don't want to encourage that issue, which I have heard come on a couple of times. All right. If there's nothing else, then let's go ahead and roll the call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I need to abstain on B3 as I was not at the Executive Session for the discussion on that. And C, I need to abstain on the Regular Session and Executive Session for April 24th as I was not in attendance for that meeting.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Delona?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Abstain.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes, but I also need to abstain on the Work Session and Executive Session Minutes for April 10th as I was not in attendance.
Okay. All right. Moving on. If there are objections under Personnel, I would like to move items 1 through 14. And make sure I got that right, because I have a missing one. 1 through 14 has a block. One second. Mr. Anderson? We have our new hires and resignations, our extra pay for doing things like moving classrooms. We have our in-service hours. We have our ESY program in the summer payments. We have cashing out various vacation days. We have substitute bus drivers, several, or at least a couple of people observing, college students observing at our schools. And then we have the relatively normal FMLA requests and so on. We also have the miracle number five for Dr. Pallas. We have... I'm sorry. Moves of absences. And we are approving contracts for one of our Business Administration Secretaries, our Director of Technology. Chaperones for the value of a great trip to Washington. Okay. Questions, comments?
On 1BEB, it's work additional, four days, seven hours each day over the summer to set up for the new school year for Riverview Nurse. Is it, it looks like it's only at Riverview, not the other schools, the other nurses? A little description on why they're not there?
The other one will be, they'll all have some summer hours.
Okay.
So is that something we do every year?
Yes. It depends on the year. Sometimes it's three, sometimes it's four. It has been up to five. But they have to give a rationale as to what they're doing to make it, so that they can get the hours that they need.
In general, what is it exactly that they're doing?
Basically, they have to make sure that all the, everybody's immunizations are received and then also enter it all into the database so it's accessible. So all the incoming kindergartners, then make sure that their orders for all their, you know, supplies and things like that are set.
Actually, R, R is Lakeview.
Yeah, you know what? I thought it was off there. R is...
I didn't see a value, you want with that one, I just could see.
Yeah, R is on there.
Zip. All right, can I, uh, give you a, is that what you did?
Question. Uh, you have a contract, uh, number eleven, number twelve. Uh, did we see those contracts in a, in a, um, in a, in a packet? I don't remember seeing it. And I don't know if that's because I've just been overwhelming reading stuff lately or because we didn't see it.
This is, you're right, I mean, we don't, we didn't give you the contracts, just basically giving her with the same contract she had last year, just with a, with a two percent raise.
Both of them?
I'm talking about Cindy. What about eleven?
Would you have put it in the contract and reattach one year for you?
It's, it's, they're, those are those one-page contracts, it has the same language from the year before. Nothing changes, just, just their increment.
They're both two percent?
No, the, the, the Cindy is part of the administration. Central office administration, we're all getting two percent. The other ones, Demarest, I'm not sure.
Uh, the other one, receive a little more than two percent, uh, based on an agreement that we made up last year.
Can I make the request that in the future, even if it's the same, they use to attach it?
Sure.
What's, what's a little more than two percent, like three percent, eight percent, twelve percent?
It was approximately five percent.
How much?
Five percent. She got, they made a deal, there was a, there was a deal with her last year to get her to a number that we made, that we all talked about last year. And we didn't want to do it in one year. It was in two years.
Um, can we talk about, uh, M and N, um, the school counselors, uh, the summer hours? Can you give us some, uh, background notes?
So, every year since I've been here, this has been on the agenda. They've always had summer hours to do, to do scheduling. One of the, one of the things about our district is our middle school schedule is very complicated due to the fact that there's about four or five different things going on at once. The, the, the skep, the program that we have and every other program, I know right before I got here, you hired a consultant from Baltimore, I believe, that came up, said the same thing, that the comp, that the schedule has too much going on for you to be able to use any, um, any scheduling program to do it. So, so actually, we actually have to sit down and enter each kid's name into each class, which is, is a lot of data entry over the summer. Uh, the good news is, we are getting close to where our schedule will be more, more like a normal schedule, meaning you might have quarters and whole years, or even quarter semesters and whole years. But not what, what we have now, is quarters, fifths, thirds, full year, and semesters. So, once we get to full semester quarter, we will, not, not just, not just for saving a few thousand dollars on the entry, but it's a much more efficient and, uh, more foolproof way of doing it. Because, you know, when you have people actually entering names and there's a, there's a tendency to have a mistake. Whereas you just enter them, you take them from a database and then you just, you just sit scheduler and it actually pushes all the kids into the classes. You can manipulate it from there, because there are some, you know, kids that don't, like oddball stuff that doesn't, that doesn't work. So that's, that's how, uh, that's what they're going to be doing over summer.
I guess my question would be, as a follow-up, and I don't know if Don and Barb have the same recollection, but since you stated as every year since you've been here, prior to that, we were working towards not having the school counselors do the scheduling, and I thought we had achieved that. So I'm, and I know I brought this up last year, and I had hoped that there'd be, you know, more of a discussion, you know, in committee about why the need, why the administrators can't be the ones doing that when they work for us twelve months.
Well, it's, it's basically data entry. It's just typing in names and numbers. We're, I don't feel that that's something that we want to have our, our principals working on or something.
If that's the case, then, I mean, school counselors are very, very qualified people. Can we find somebody at a lower rate to data entry? I mean, you probably, you know, there's, there's, we hire high school kids, I'm not saying high school kid is the right person, but I mean, we're hiring other people at fifteen dollars an hour when this is coming out at fifty dollars an hour.
We probably could, and then hire the guidance counselors, I mean, for a couple of days to make sure that there's nothing tricky in there.
Who's creating the schedule?
Well, the master schedule is created by the administration. This is not creating the master schedule, this is actually inputting the kid into the classes. Because our system won't be able to deal with all that stuff like six months.
But it doesn't have those, it doesn't seem to suggest a data entry type of skill set, right?
But then the school counselors, you're saying, would still have to come in and verify.
They would have to do some of them, yeah, because some of them, some of them would be oddballs, you know, like that. And they would also have to make sure that, that it's done. I mean, I did this for a long time. I never had a crazy schedule like this, where you can't do anything with the scheduler. But normally, you do it with a scheduler and then somebody in guidance looks it over to make sure that it's all squared away. It takes some time to do that, it doesn't take a minute. But this is actually sitting down, typing things into a, into the, into the class, which is not a great use of our, of our, uh, employees at that time. But I, I do believe that we're getting close to where we won't need this anymore. At this particular moment, we, we may be leaning off of this type of a system this year. This, this may be the last year. And that's what we're hoping for, and not, not just because we want not do this, but because we want our schedule to be a little bit more, um, I guess, user-friendly, so everybody understands it more. Right now, it really is an odd, it's definitely an odd schedule to have that many things going on at once.
Is it Genesis that we use for this?
Yes.
How much do we spend on Genesis?
Um, we spend a lot of money on Genesis.
Is the answer.
Probably something like twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, have we gone to Genesis and say, like, hey, we spent a lot of money with you, um, maybe we don't spend another thirty-five hundred dollars on people to type stuff in?
We actually did. And I, and I had a phone call with, I got on a, I got on the line with our assistant principal, who basically creates the schedule. And this other guy from Genesis, another engineer, he, he was a splinter guy. He did something called Full Rules, Full Control Schedular. And he, even he said, because I used him in Hasbro Heights, we had a middle school and a high school at the same time, in the same schedule, and we were able to use Full Control Schedular. When he said that you have all these different, like those six different scenarios, he said even my thing called Full Control Schedular can't do this. So, we're try, and I know, I know right before I got here, it may have been that year, for those who've been around, or maybe it was the year before, there was a guy from Baltimore that you hired, and he came up and said the same thing, that there's no way to get this thing squared away. But we're closed now. We're, you know, we're, we're going to, this is going to come up through Sandy's committees, but we're looking to go through cycles on quarters, right? I don't know if we're at that point yet. What was that saying?
Yeah.
Cycles on quarters. The foreign language is going to be different now. It's either going to be full year or half year, it's not going to be like a third of the year. So basically, what they had is a third year thing and then two-thirds of a year. And then they had something every other day for a third of the year? Right, Sandy? Or every other day for two-thirds?
The cycles are every other day for eighteen days.
Right. And then what was the other thing that's every other day for a third of the year, or two-thirds of the year? That was the science class, right?
Art writing. I think everything is moving to, we're, we're ready to move to quarters and semesters.
Yeah. We're close.
I, I just don't understand, I mean, we, I, I guess I don't understand how Genesis has such a lock on this state, despite the fact that I know that this is the, at least the second district in this county that can't use it for their scheduling. I, I just don't understand, we spent twenty-five thousand dollars on a system that I hear so much negativity about or issues with, or hey, it's good, but it doesn't quite do this, so we've got to spend extra money on that. And we probably spent another ten thousand dollars on top for fixes, on top of the twenty-five thousand dollars we already spent with them. I know they've got a lock on this state, but, I mean, I don't know if it's worthwhile for us to go look at other options for that system, because we have to, when we consider the cost of Genesis, let's understand that there's a bunch of other costs that aren't in the actual price. This is thirty-five hundred here. I know we bought other stuff to supplement it. Like I said, uh, we're at least another ten thousand dollars, I feel like, in the hole for that system. It's a, it's a lot of money. And, uh, if it's not meeting our needs, um, then I think we should be looking at other options. But, I mean, it's not a conversation, obviously, for this, but, but it's, there's a lot of money we spend on things, like this is a thirty-five hundred dollar data entry. It is unbelievable. I mean, that's just a tremendous amount of money to spend on that entry. I feel like we can go for, hire somebody for almost the entire summer to do data entry for that cost. Not for five days.
It's like forty, forty-five bucks an hour.
Yeah.
To have these people do it. And they're, 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 they're very trained, but they should be using, if, if we're going to be, if we're going to have somebody do a data entry, we, okay, have, use them to, uh, you know, to, to check it once it's done, but just for the straight data entry, that doesn't make any sense.
What about the secretaries of Valley View? Is that something that they could do?
You know, you've got to remember too, there, a lot of the people, they have to take their vacation days in the summer too, so they get like a whole month off, like the secretary will get a whole month off. And then there's a lot of stuff going on in the summer, you know, with all the different equipment that comes in, you know, the supplies and all has to be logged in, and there's, there's a decent amount of work for them to do too. Look, if, if everybody's not comfortable with it too, I mean, there, we could, we could approve, you know, two days each right now and then come back and say, do you need more time later? I mean, something like that. We could do that. I would recommend even making it, you know, like three days each and then we ask if they need more time.
Are these eight-hour days they're doing, Steve, typically?
It's a typical day, it was seven hours, seven hours fifteen minutes, yeah.
Laura, uh, Don, Laura, what do you guys think? Any comments, thoughts about it?
I don't think it is confident to the faculty review, so I don't know what percentage is just
How many students are at Valley?
About six hundred.
So then, with that suggestion, Steve, would you also be looking to hire data entry people? Or would you be having them do it?
I mean, there would have to be data entry people that are like, that are, um, confidential.
And that's what I'm
Not from, not from outside. Like if, if I had another part-time secretary or something, we can make them full-time over in summer for a few days. Something like that. But we don't have, we, we, we just hired a brand-new person. So she would have to get trained on how to do that, they don't, they work in the, in the elementary school. So it would be, it would be pretty big.
I mean, to play devil's advocate a little bit, um, if you bring in data entry and they, and they mess it up, right? We could end up in a situation on the first day, like a local district nearby, right? Where it's going to be all this screwed up. Um, nobody wants that.
You know, data entry is just a, you know, usually a low-level, powerful type of job. Um, it's kind of so, so concerning, you know, you've got to have the quality on this. So, and I don't know how complicated this
Well, one thing is
I mean, you know, you know, all of the data entry, this is some of very simple, some a little more complex, and then the, the accuracy is really, really important, so, you know, I don't have that information, but
We have very little problems with our schedules, considering how complex it is.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if that's, you know, what, what you need to do to have it done accurately and then they you know, a reasonable amount of time, you know, you cut that, I mean, you know, it is expensive for data entry, but yeah, if the other thing you have is the way in it, I mean, you get it done more quickly, put a cap on it, you know, it's
So why don't we, why don't we make it, why don't we make it three days each? And I'll, I'll ask for an update in, in July, and if they need more time in August, we'll put it on the agenda.
I mean, just, just to really, yeah, um, Mike just did the math quick, right? Six hundred roughly students, um, seventy hours, comes out to about eight and a half minutes to, to put each schedule, right? But that's a student's complete schedule for the year.
Yeah, that's, that's not that much time.
I mean, it's not, it's not in terms of our schedule.
I mean, there's, there's so many variables.
Sounds crazy.
So my, my point then being that if we're going to approve three, we're going to approve two more later down the road, if you tell me. So if, if it takes eight and a half minutes, then why, I, I don't want to
Why don't we put up to?
Not approve, we don't have to.
Why don't we do up to, then if they don't need it, you know?
That's what we already did. Oh, it says we're
It doesn't really say, it just says not to exceed, but we could just write up to five.
But we're, yeah, I mean, this is actually written, kind of strange, because five days is five days, not to exceed, I guess. You don't have to, like, not to exceed, because you're approved five days.
Well, we could, we could say up to, and then I can ask them for an update in the middle of the year and then say, you know what, you guys are good with eight days or something, four each.
Mrs. Lindsay, what do you think? Can you, uh?
I, I don't know what I think. I'll look up.
Dave, what's your, what's your feel?
I still think it's a lot more for data entry. Uh, I don't think I understand enough, I don't think I understand enough about how, uh, how the program works. I mean, we have all of the, we have all the student information already in the database, correct? Isn't that something we can, we can just cut and paste out of the database and, and into the appropriate spots? I, I don't, I don't think I understand enough how this works.
To use the scheduler, it works to what you're saying. If you can't use the scheduler, you actually have to input the kids into the class.
So you're creating, you're creating these schedules from scratch, manually, from a care basis?
Correct.
Because of the way our schedule is?
Correct.
Can I ask, did, did it take this five days last year, when the council said it?
They had it last year for, it's varied over the last few years, so I've looked back. So sometimes there's been ten days, sometimes there's been eight days, sometimes there's been six days. Um, this time they have ten days on there, four, five each. And, uh, I probably, you know what, I, I think it should say up to. That way I can ask and say, do you need, you know, can you tell me your progress? And then say, okay, you're done in four days. And I'll explain that to them.
Are you okay with that up to? So we should, yeah.
Demarest, can we read the agenda today? Or you guys can?
Sure. Um, yeah, so I'd like to quote a friendly amendment for item one, M and N, to read, um, in the column of the description, work summer hours to complete scheduling up to five days at per diem rate, not to exceed, for M will be not to exceed one thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty cents. And line N will be, uh, work summer hours to complete scheduling up to five days at per diem rate, not to exceed one thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty cents.
Thank you, I, I accept that amendment. Um, Mr. Cass, did you say it? I'm sorry, I can't, I can't, all right.
Oh, actually
Actually
Yeah.
Mr. Cass. I'm sorry. It was Mike.
Yeah.
It wasn't?
Mike.
It was you?
Yeah.
That's fine. That's fine, you can, you can do that, right? That's okay.
Well, if you both say yes, right?
Yes.
Can I ask about number six? The work rules and job description?
Yeah, for the, uh, direct, bottom of page seven.
You have a question?
Yeah, I mean, we just hired a new, the person that's these work rules and
Well, we, we hired, I mean, the work rules and job description are out of date. It was just, it's just, we changed the title from coordinator of, of transportation to director. It's not, they're both non-certificated titles, there's no certificate that goes along with it, no tenure that goes along with it. It's just a different title.
And he was hired with no work rules, or he was offered the old work rules?
He was offered the
Thing we haven't approved yet?
No, he was offered the work, the work rules from the contract. He had, he had a different, he had a contract with some different things in it that were, um, because together, we needed to negotiate his, his, uh, his, uh, vacation. We told you guys that, it was in his contract, so
And we updated it, what was, and it was part of attachments.
And that's why the work rules are being changed this way?
Correct. Correct.
Without getting into too much detail, number nine, seems unusual to approve a leave of absence after. Is that, 'cause usually I see these come in prior to, is that just a particular situation?
Sometimes people are sick too.
Okay, got it.
Well, not just that, you know, we do not wanna approve that person prior to, like, the next fiscal year or appointment of the contract.
Got it.
'Cause they don't have tenure. It would be a little awkward, just to elaborate, awkward to give somebody a leave and then not go from a contract.
Correct, got it, got it. Makes sense. But she started her leave of absence on May sixteen.
Correct.
Correct.
Got it.
Um, just looking back, like, I don't know if we wanna be consistent, but like, the nurse has the same, like, maybe an "up to", or the, the two or three days?
Well, R is written that way.
Shouldn't B be one?
Yeah, B B isn't. Oh, no, you're right, it's "up to" seven hours a day for four days. Not "up to". Yeah, there's no consistency.
We could do "up to" on all. Are, are you good with the, is everybody good, or, oh, I should say, Laura, she brought it up. Are you good with the wording on R? Which is "work up to seven hours per day for four days over summer to prepare for nursing needs"? No, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, just wanna make sure you're reading it correctly.
Well, so, we're saying it "up to" four, I was saying the days.
The "up to" four days.
Like, you may not need the four days if you're...
That's a really good point, actually.
It's about days, it's like... It's "up to" twice.
Up to seven hours?
I would like to think they log their time if it's six or, whatever is, you know, they're trying to be consistent with it.
Well, but we already said seven hours, 'cause we didn't have seven hours per day in the other one.
Yeah.
So we're saying seven hours per day is a standard day, right?
Correct.
So we can just take out the seven hours per day.
Right?
Yeah.
Can it just read "work up to four days over summer to prepare for nursing needs"?
Yeah, that's great.
Barb, is that...
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, they'll, they're responsible for their own timekeeping. We, if they finish early and it's a nice, sure day, maybe they don't wanna come in. Like, I don't wanna make something funny.
Yeah, I would agree having consistency on it, and I, I would also ask that in the future, if we can group things... I understand that, like, the work session, so the additional stuff that gets added may not list up appropriately, but these were both added since the work session. So if we could just group them together, that way we see the same kind of consistency. It helps meet it, 'cause I actually looked and tried to find the Lakeview nurse and couldn't find her, and then you guys found it. So it's just easier if they're together.
Especially when you have this one.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's correct, I just wanna make sure I get this correct. R and B B are the only two, right? So as of right now, the, the valid view nurse is not on this list, or am I missing something?
I didn't see it. I didn't see it.
So I, I'd like to propose another kind of amendment on R to, for the description to read, "Work up to four days over summer to prepare for nursing needs." And also, B B, the same description, "Work up to four days over summer to prepare for nursing needs."
I accept that. Do you accept that?
Yes. And, just Steve, real quick, on the cash-out of vacation days for administrators, do they have a certain time in their contract supposed to do that, or is it whenever they feel like requesting it, or...
They are supposed to do it before the summer.
Okay, got it. And is there, remind me again, is there, I made a note up here, is there a cap?
There's a nine.
Nine.
Nine, that's why I...
And it's only for, so we already have two administrators that don't get it because of, uh, there's a, there is other, I'm finding it.
Or at least tenure dimension. Both have a cap, because I'm looking at one that I think is our, one of our last tenure, and I see our...
Which, right?
No, sorry.
No, she's, she, 'cause she was here two years before.
Right.
It's only Mike, it's only Mike and Grace. They're the only two. Corn and Tiffany. Only Mike and Grace.
Got it, okay.
Huh?
Mike, Picatoni, and Grace.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, um, anyone else before we vote on the, on personnel? Or anything else? Everybody good? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Delona?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
I'm gonna vote, I'm going to vote no on one M and N, and yes on the rest.
Can you?
Yeah, can you just repeat that?
Can you repeat that again, please?
Vote no on one M and N.
And yes on everything else.
Correct.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to IMP, and Mr. Lor, would you pair them with these items tonight?
Certainly. We have items one through five without a number two. Uh, there were no new field trip requests this, uh, this time. Uh, number one is workshops with expenses. We have the writing workshop webinar, which we discussed last meeting. Uh, we have five teachers who were accepted into the Wharton-Gillingham training in Secaucus. And C is a, two, eight teachers, is that right? Two, four, sorry, nine teachers, uh, who are attending a one-credit, uh, Wharton-Gillingham course at FDU. We have the Riverview School Elementary Library Reading Log. And Dr. Sarah Springer to present on executive functioning skills at the Summer Literacy Institute. And the BCSS Educational Enterprises to provide professional development on co-teaching, also at the Summer Literacy Institute.
I will second. Anything, anyone on this? Mr. Lor, you don't have any comments on the reading log?
I disapprove of disposing of the books, but I also realize that I'm flagellating a deceased equine, so I wasn't going to waste our time with them.
Fair enough.
But now that you bring it up, I do in fact disapprove of the disposing of the books, although, as I understand it, they will be, first, the Riverview kids will be given the opportunity to take what they want of the books that are being weeded. Is that correct?
It's open to the public for two days, and then it'll be, everything else will be brought to the St. Clair's book, the barn.
Uh, is there any, are we, are we going to donate any of those to other schools that might be interested in them? Not necessarily the public school or St. Mary's?
We're, we're advertising it to the public, and then we're gonna have two days. Other than that, it'll be sent to St. Clair's, or St. Francis', or whatever that book barn is. Uh, but no, we don't ask other schools if they want it.
Okay.
Just the, the local schools. We did inform, celebrate the children and...
Yeah, St. Mary's.
So, yeah, St. Mary's, just like these two local, but not, like, out to the county.
Can you guys remind me the Denville Summer Literacy Institute?
Yes, that's our two-day, it has been three days, but this year it's two days, where we offer a variety of workshops for teachers to attend. And sort of, we, we started out with just literacy, but now it's technology's infused, and we have the sheer social-emotional skills, executive functioning, and co-teaching, so a few other interests too. So teachers come, this year, there are three two-hour sessions, so there's several workshops at a time, and they select which ones they want to take. And then, on the second day, it's one speaker that we approved a couple months ago, who does five-hour training on that.
Great, thank you.
How you all doing down there? Everything good? Any questions? Good, okay. Nothing else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Delona?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
I'll vote no on number three and yes on the rest.
Mr. Lor?
Same, no on three, yes on the rest.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, moving on to policy. Mr. Anderson, would you care to read the laws?
Sure, if there are no objections, I'd like to move, uh, just, I guess we have one for second reading adoption and a plethora of for first reading.
I'll second.
Second, Barb?
So it sounded like the district's sustainability, uh, policy, you know, would help with the prams?
It'll help for Lakeview and Valleyview. Hopefully, we're gonna get them too this year. Remember, they, I don't even remember, they started one year after Riverview. Riverview started first.
Steve, I know we briefly talked about this, and I can't remember the, um, resolution for last meeting, if we were gonna look into it or not. Um, the, the administration of medical marijuana is for...
Oh, yeah, I did.
Students, the staff.
Yeah, it's, I put it in my report to you guys this week. I did ask them, and they're working on a policy. I think he said something like, uh, the summer.
Okay.
Something like that.
And this is a, this administration of medical marijuana is a required policy?
Yes, it's, it's a new law that came out that we need to have a policy on.
Awesome. I have to keep adding to the list of the required policies. Eventually, they'll be just stacked up.
How you read all of them, right? Yeah.
Well, I think they already are stacked up in two binders, aren't they?
It's, it's bad when I have to get a delivery to my house for the stack of tough stuff I have to read for the next meeting.
Yeah.
But we do do it slowly, which is a little easier.
You guys do your best you can, I'm not blaming you, it's just, it seems like the required list gets longer and they never take anything off of it.
You're gonna have a couple coming up.
Like unfunded credits?
There's a lot of paper being used.
Somebody's gonna carry the board every morning.
Um, so I have a couple of questions on policy five-three-one-zero, health services.
Okay.
It refers to, on the very top of the first page, number one, to review, the review of immunization records for completeness pursuant to NJ, whatever. And in parentheses, it says "policy" and "regulation" five-three-two-oh. I could not find regulation five-three-two-oh on our website. So, can we check that we have it, and if we do, put it up on the website, and if we don't...
Which one was it?
Regulation five-three-two-oh.
You're talking about five-three-one-oh, right?
Yes, but the very first number in it refers to a regulation that I don't think we have. So can we either strike that regulation, find that regulation, pass that regulation?
Yeah, sure.
It's probably another required.
I was gonna say, it's probably...
It must be another file.
But notice, there's a...
But this is the problem, you have two regulations and policies, they're gonna end up contradicting each other at some point.
Well, and the last item on this one, this is also a brand-new one that, we're not updating this, this is just brand-new.
Five-three-two-zero?
Yeah. I'm on five-three-one, you, I see policy, do you see regulation?
Oh, regulation or...
I'm saying regulation, we have a policy, I did not find the regulation.
It's another exciting thing, the difference between policies and regulations.
Well, we'll get to that next, we'll have a question about it.
Usually, the regulations were just, they're terrible, regulations not approved by the board, but now, like, most of the regulations are approved by the board too.
So, we've never had this before, so when there's a cross-out and a new red insert, that's just us changing what Strassme...
Which, which one are you talking about now?
I'm still on five-three-one-zero policy. There is only one red section, it's in number thirteen, so page is four, oh, actually, that's not true. There may be other, no, that is the only red section.
Right at the end, right in the last, the last...
Yeah, there is one other red section, but, but I mean, in general, there are two red things. We've never had this before, it's never been adopted by us before, so we're just changing what Strassme did, or Strassme had it before, and they're updating it, and we just never had it before.
Okay, so, just to make sure we're on the same thing, I'm on policy five-three-one-oh, health services?
Correct.
On the back, number thirteen, there's some changes?
It says "the," and then it's crossed out "school nurse or designate," and then I have in red, underlined, "director of special services or designate."
Right, so that was, you have a choice of who you want to put there.
Okay, so, I was just asking.
No, I know, I just wanted to make sure I was answering the right question.
We've never had this before, so I knew it was not an update of our old policy.
'Cause that's usually the way it is, if it's struck, it's usually an update to our policy, and that's how you know it's been.
But if you look at like eight, if you look at eight A, right, it's grades six to twelve is crossed out, eight, so obviously, that's the policy.
Well, that'll be my next question when we get to the regulation.
So these are fill-in-the-blank kind of things, a little bit.
So we decided that it's the director of special services that shall ensure that a hearing aid is worn,
because that sort of, that person would have been IEP or a 504?
It says "or designate," so it would be, it, the nurses fall under her, so she would just make sure something's there.
So we chose the director of special services even though we think a nurse is gonna be doing it?
Correct. It says "or designate," just like everything's...
Well, we didn't choose the school nurse or designate, we chose...
We wanna level up, right?
Well, because you can, you're never not gonna have a director of special services, but you may not have a head nurse. Who knows if we're, you know, we're not gonna, that's why we, we felt like the most reasonable title that would be here the longest would be the director of special aid.
Okay, by law, the district has to have a nurse. I know we don't have to have one in every building, and, you know...
Actually, you don't even have to have one in this district, you can have one in the next district. Like, or it should be your school nurse. You don't have to.
I did not know that was possible.
They would be like the designate for the district.
We had this, we, we had to talk a little bit about this.
Yes.
Wow.
Sounds like, sounds like he's trying, Steve's trying not to tie the hands of future boards with requiring them to have a nurse.
Let's tie them, right now, let's tie their hands.
You know what I'm also trying to do is not have to redo it when you call something, something different. We're probably always gonna have a director of special aid.
Well, in my call to the board, we didn't always have a director of special aid, so, you know...
But, yeah.
We had, we gave them a different name back then. All right, we can move on to regulation five-three-one-zero.
Excellent.
And I may have missed some, but we did keep one of the twelve-grade things in, and I, so page seven, top of page seven, number four, we caught, it seemed like most of them, we changed it to A grade, 'cause I don't ever, as a district, wanna be responsible for kids in twelfth grade, but we left, we chose twelve, and we didn't choose eight, the very last word, and the last sentence, and the phrase, number four on the top of page seven.
Right.
So I think we should be choosing grades seven, not through eight, does this just happen in grade seven?
No, I'll, I'll double-check.
Seven through eight, or not twelve, 'cause I mean, we don't have a twelfth grade.
I'll double-check on that.
Okay.
Steve, from that same paragraph, is the change for pre-adolescent just literally...
No hyphen?
Yeah.
They let us choose between hyphen and no hyphen? 'Cause, oh, no, we've had this before, this one we're updating.
Yeah, it's gonna change that, right?
Similarly, at the bottom of page seven, we've crossed out the "and eleven" and kept, oh, no, we did cross out the "s." My apologies, it's just hard to see.
Yes, you're right, it is hard to see.
'Cause I, I don't... Because I, I don't think that was, I don't think that one was made blue, I think it's still black.
Yeah.
My apologies.
So our previous policies, Steve, we actually had some grades through 12 or through 10 in other places?
Well, it depends on when they give it to you, they don't differentiate, meaning we have to catch that and take it out.
So, but what I'm saying is, in this particular policy, which we've had on record before, was adopted in 2008, revised in 2014. Are these changes we're seeing, changes to Strauss S M E's recommendation, or are they changes to our existing policy?
Sometimes there are changes to the existing policy, meaning maybe we did leave it in there, we found a bunch of them. When we've been doing this, that they left the 12 in there, like.
I know we've been trying to clean them up as they come back from the board.
So, I can find that answer out, I don't know off the top of my head whether or not that was from their suggestion or something we may have missed before.
Well, I suppose we could look online and see what's.
I, I guess we should probably think about having a way to indicate whether the change is from Strauss S M E recommendation or from our existing policy. It only, only is a question of our existing policies, but.
Correct.
Sometimes it's nice to know whether it's just something we're changing or something Strauss S M E's recommending, I don't know.
So we really, most of the time, we, not all the time, but ninety-nine percent of the time, it's from them, saying you have to make this change. So, we, but we get, so, we get choices often, like, they'll give you three different choices. Like the director of special aid or something like that, or a school nurse, so we choose from the one we feel more comfortable with. But these all go through like the heads of whatever department is, and goes through the committee and then to this, so that, it's the decision-making that comes down from, you know, from the different administrators.
There's just some, yeah, some of these are odd, like for instance, if you look on page seven, on the same regulation we're talking about, G two. I see it, stripping NJAC six A colon sixteen dash four dot three, and I see it written below with just extra spaces.
Oh, you're right, I see that too.
I don't know if that's just a mistake or?
Well, you know what happens too when you use this, even if you, if you, say you make a mistake and you cut something out, and you type it back in, it always shows that. It shows like your, uh, your change.
Um, a little more catch on the three, twelve, if you look at that same regulation, page six. It's number, I just have to. Five, Board of Education will not permit a student enrolled in grades six to twelve to participate in school sponsored explosive activities. Is that?
Yeah, I do.
Just so you know.
I'll research with number twelve.
Like, when I pulled up the old regulation, well, and it's on our website, it looks like we had it all to eight. I remember doing this with lots of our policies when we.
These are probably Strauss S M E.
Yeah, because I mean, right now on our website, D four, which this is still D four, says, and adolescents grade seven through eight.
Yeah, okay.
I'm trying to see. That early time. And we, yeah, and we had pre-adolescents with a hyphen. Yeah, and, and section eight, where, where we have all the red eights, our old policy had grade eight, so that's just, you know, off the new Strauss S M E not updating our old policy.
You got anything else, man? All right, good. Okay, man. Okay, you good on these policies? The sustainability one is the one where, for second reading, so everybody else okay and everything else? Roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes, but no on five, three, three, zero point oh one and R five, three, three, zero point oh one.
Mrs. Delona?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Lour?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capella?
Yes.
Okay. Finance, Mrs. Delona, you care to move us through these tonight?
Sure, Lena, um, if there's no objection, I'd like to move items one, under letter D, finance, numbers one through fourteen as a block. This includes, um, the monthly checklist, contracts, uh, for computer services, including the network upgrade. Um, all right, I'll go in order. Educational harmony is three for five additional days, conclusionary support, social skills for school year sixteen, seventeen. Um, network support, these are all she, uh, contracts, one for network, one for the bus software, transfinder, one for the domain controller. Item seven, the tax monies and schedule for the, uh, school, next year's school budget. Eight, the approval of Ryan Freeland to conduct assistive technology evaluations. Number nine and ten involve the educational services commission agreements. And, yeah, award letters for school supplies, services and supplies. Number eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen involve the Chromebooks with licensing fees and, um, cases and insurance. That's all.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Steve, on the, uh, Chromebook bags?
Yes.
Did we look into, and I mentioned this to you earlier, Father, I know I asked the initial question, but did we look into getting, was there any way we can get bags with, you know, Denville school logo on them, Valleyview logo, something like that? I know that when the foundation did them, they did them through a local vendor that gave them a pretty good deal. So I didn't know, it looked like it was a pretty good price we got, uh, for the quote, but I didn't know if there's anything, any way we could do that. I think that would add a little bit of school spirit to the kid, give them a little more normality to have something on there that says the school.
Here's what happened with it. We, we, um, we made the conscious decision that, I didn't think, I don't think we should get in the business of these type, paying for these types of things with, uh, with budget money or with, with the foundation money. It just felt like they're consumables, they're used and they're beat up and they're gone. So, the way it is right now, we were able, because it's only ten dollars, it doesn't, it's not personalized. You know, we, we weren't able to get the personalized type for ten dollars, because ten dollars is pretty cheap. It's a bag like the thing I have, you know, a little bit, a little bit less of that, but it's like a protective case. So, we got lucky that our, the insurance on the Chromebooks went down for some reason, so it, it's a little difference between like the year one of a Chromebook and year two, the insurance actually is higher for the first year and it, and it goes down. So, if you average it all out, it covers, the twenty-nine dollar fee that we charge the parents will cover the insurance and the bag. Instead of having to go through the, through the foundation, and it adds up to a decent amount of money.
So we're gonna, wait, so we're gonna give the seventh graders new bags and the sixth graders?
Yeah, because have you seen your daughters?
Actually, it's great, too.
My son's in shock.
Oh, she's got a nutty ear, she's got a nutty ear.
Well, if they don't need it, that's fine. But most of the kids beat them up pretty bad, right, Sandy's. What was that?
It's a Julie's Clean.
Yeah. Well, yeah, even like all the other kids, like the zippers are broken and everything, no.
I was gonna ask, but I was surprised to see that in your report that they only lost a year, I mean.
Well, they use them every single day, carrying them back and forth.
I use one every single day and I've had it for years. How long have you had these bags?
You're not eleven, you're not a sixth grader. And the bags, to be honest with you, I mean, Steve is mentioning, like, the cost of ten dollars a bag, you're not gonna get the quiet body. I know the foundation, the bags they gave, it was really appreciated, but they weren't, they weren't a fifty-dollar bag, kind of.
Yeah, I was thinking, like, do we really wanna spend ten, twelve thousand dollars a year, or something like that, ten thousand dollars a year on, am I off on that? What's the number?
Twelve thousand, twenty-four.
Right, it just seemed like a lot of money for, uh, you know, a consumable like that.
Well, that's something I did wanna bring up, I mean, we talked about the cost of Chromebooks and I think we need to be very careful on how we're doing this because we, we talked about the cost previously on how much did it cost last year to buy the sixth grade Chromebooks? But then there's licensing fees, now we're getting, you know, bags every year, I mean, the cost is not just the sixth grade equipment, now you're buying a bag every year. And you, it just, we need to be very careful, we have to understand what the cost is, it's not just the initial cost, it's reoccurring cost that happened year after year.
All right, let me explain that. So I, I was wrong, because that, it is including the fee. When you buy a Chromebook, you need to buy the fee, you need to pay this fee. The fee is for the life of the Chromebook though, it's not a recurring cost. The insurance is a, is a recurring cost, you need it every year. So, so, um, when we're buying these Chromebooks, the fee, it's all included in that number we give you though, like, we're still spending somewhere in the two-hundred dollar range per unit. The cost of the insurance and the cost of the bag is being borne by the parents. So the board is not, even though we have to put it out, we collect back the money for the insurance and for the bags. So this twelve thousand dollars is not just for bags, it's also the licensing fees. But even so, like, once we get into the third year of this, you know, at ten dollars a bag, six, six hundred kids, it's six thousand dollars. I didn't see that as a great use of the foundation money either, or, or our money. So I thought that that was something that the pa, if we can get, if we can still stay within twenty-nine dollars, we were last year for the parents, that the parents would have to, uh, pay for the insurance and the bag. If they don't need a bag, then maybe they don't need to pay the insurance, but if their kid keeps it in good shape, we'll talk about that.
So, Steve, can you explain, there's two different, twelve and thirteen have two different, uh, groups of Chromebooks, I believe twelve was for the sixth graders?
Right, the reason why she does them on separate resolutions, she needs them on separate quotes for the, for, because some of them have the, uh, the insurance and some don't, you know what I mean? So, we don't buy insurance on the ones that the kids don't take home, we only buy it on the ones that the kids do take home. So she needs to be able to say like serial numbers, five through, through two-hundred and fifty or something, and they, they do it that way.
My question is, what are the other hundred and fourteen being used for? Because they're not going home, they're not being.
They're not going home, right, they're going into the school, so, they're gonna, some will go into Valleyview, some will go into River, some will go into like, like, you know, into other classrooms and libraries and things like that.
So, two years ago when you got here, you told us, we couldn't hand out devices we already had because we didn't have room on the network. We spent some money, but it doesn't seem like a tremendous amount of money on the network. And in the last two years, we've added two-hundred and thirty times two, four-hundred and sixty plus, we've added five-hundred and fifty devices to our network.
Yeah.
That seems like a lot.
And, well, first of all.
And I still hear teachers complain about issues they have with our network.
The Chromebooks work great with the network. The roaming profiles on the older, on the older laptops don't work great.
Well, here are dead spots.
It's funny, because every, I just even asked that and they told me that the dead spots are gone. You know, you never know, I mean, it could, it's possible, you might have, you might have a dead spot in certain areas, but in the, in the middle school, the middle school is done. The two elementary schools for the older kids seems very good. As a matter of fact, we, we tested on the Chromebooks, so we used the wifi in the, in the elementary schools and there weren't any connectivity issues. There was a couple little things that happened, but not the connectivity. Chromebooks, you gotta remember, they don't, they don't have a roaming profile, because everything's web-based.
So the hundred and fourteen are going into the elementary primary?
There's, there's some of them for Valleyview, like for, uh, eighth grade teachers who are really into Google Docs. Some, some of those will use those, another cart, and then some go into Valley and some go into River.
Because I know the foundation also donated Chromebooks like the last year to, I thought, this fall, I thought they did.
Oh, they.
To certain teachers that requested it for whatever projects they were doing with Chromebooks. I thought.
I know, I know, um.
That's last year in our, in our brains, as it may, but.
They did a half and half.
It was, it was.
Yeah, they did like a half and half, meaning like they did half of a, of a class set and the board paid the other half of the class set. From the, from the materials we already had.
Okay. And then, so, we're buying two-hundred and thirty Chromebooks on twelve for the incoming sixth graders?
Correct.
But you're telling me that the accidental warranty insurance is only renewed on, like, next year it'll be for two-hundred and thirty, correct?
Correct.
But we're renewing for three-hundred and twenty-five accidental warranty. We have a hundred and fifteen extra, or a hundred, ninety-five extra kids in that class? Or, we said we're not renewing the insurance for the ones that are in the schools?
There's, the other, the other ones we have to renew, they're a part of the, of the insurance program that we did last year. So we have to renew them if we wanna keep the whole pile of Chromebooks insured. It's, it's gonna be something we're gonna phase out and only do the ones that we do, um, for the, for the one-to-one only, for right now, we didn't do it that way last year, so we're gonna have to recur for this year.
Do we look into starting a new insurance policy on those to see if it made sense?
We got a much better deal.
Hundred.
It's split.
Hundred.
It's the.
Like a third of the units we have.
Yeah, right, I know, and, and that's why we have to continue it for this, for this group, for this group of Chromebooks. But the good thing is, they do break and you get them renewed, you know, so it's not like we're not using them, they send a lot out and we get new ones back. It's the accidental warranty coverage, like if someone drops one, steps on it or something.
What's a lot? How many did we have break this year?
She said they, they, they were sending them out all the time. I didn't ask her for the exact number, I can get that for you. I'll ask her for exactly how many we had to repair this year. We did a lot of repairs in-house too, like, because there was warrant, there was the accidental warranty and then there was the warranty for.
We did a lot of keyboards.
Yeah, what's that called, like the manufacturer's defect? So, for the manufacturer's defects ones, they mailed us new keyboards and then we installed them, it just made it faster process, yeah.
So, Steve, I'm not asking for it now, but at some point I'd like to see the plan for how we're taking those hundred and fourteen Chromebooks and executing them. Do we have a plan for it in the works, or is it just, we're gonna buy a hundred and fourteen and figure it out from there?
No, no, we already know, I mean, there's, there's, uh, some of them we're going to, I, I can give you the exact.
Yeah, sure, fine, whatever, it's that, I just wanted to see kind of where they're going.
I guess that sort of leads it to my question, I mean, was that something that was, the tech committee was brought up to speed on?
We talked about all this in tech. What happened was the manufacturer had a great deal that came out right now, at, uh, that's expiring on June first, where we were able to get about forty-four more Chromebooks than we would've if we didn't get, if we didn't get them before June first. So we were, we wanted to leverage that, take advantage of it, so we could get the Chromebooks that we need for the Riverview library. River, Riverview library is going to be remodeled and we're gonna lose the desktops, so we wanted to give them the Chromebooks. We also wanna try to get to where we can do part testing totally on Chromebooks and not use the old laptops that we do run into problems with.
Okay. Motions four, five and six, were they spoken about with the tech committee?
We discussed this with, um, did you miss me?
Sandy gave us a report on, yeah, on, on all these. The transfinder one was probably the one. We had this.
I'm sorry, you guys.
We said Sandy, but.
I said.
That's okay, but I was.
Yeah, the transfinder one, probably the one we, we spent the least amount of time on. The domain controller upgrade, uh, that's a, um, machine that's, uh, past its end of its useful life, is no longer supported. The network support to move to town hall, um, that's basically the process of trying to figure out the best way to do it, I'm understanding of the conversation. my understanding of the conversation was. There may be a way to tap into Riverview from Town Hall, or how to configure that line seems to be the job or involved there, how to, how to make that happen.
And none of that's available to be done in-house?
To, to move the...
Yeah.
No.
Well, I assume an actual migration of the bus software application isn't like a physical move, it's... You're moving it from one cloud-based thing to another cloud-based thing?
Actually, no.
People, oh, you're actually picking up computers?
Well, right now it's not cloud-based, it's actually, it's actually a server located in Valley View, I believe.
It's a server located in the garage, actually.
Oh, garage, okay, and that server is at the end of its useful life. So it's, it's a migration from that physical location to a cloud-based subscription.
And that's not within the skill set of people that work there?
This is, if you remember, when we went to, when we eliminated the job of the engineer, when we went to SHI, these are the types of things that SHI does for us. We don't, we no longer have that type of personnel.
But they don't do it for us in the contract of how they work for us normally, they do it over and above the contract.
If it's, if it's over and above what we already have, it's extra fee. If it's part of what we normally do, like, if we have an email problem, they, they fix that. Some, anything we currently have, they maintain. If it's something new, they don't maintain it, there's additional fee.
You see, on eleven, that's the, uh, bags and the licensing fees?
Right.
So I'm looking here and it says quantity for the licensing, the renewal, is three hundred and forty-four.
That's right, that's exactly how many Chromebooks we're buying. Weird.
Okay, I got it, two thirty plus one fourteen, got it.
It's not a renewal of, the licenses is... Once you buy the license, you don't have to buy it again.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, whether it was for the existing Chromebooks or for the new ones. This is for the new Chromebooks.
Correct.
Got it, okay, thanks.
And, and she got a better deal from a different company, so, we actually bought the, the Chromebooks from one place and the license from another, cuz she got a better deal on the license from a different place?
Okay.
So the Chromebook carrying case and the Chromebook licensing fees are from the same place that's doing the, all the migrations and network support for us?
Correct.
And these are the people that we had, a pool of money, um, that we were going to use to pay for the extra, for the extra things that we weren't going to be doing in-house anymore, correct?
Correct.
Do you remember off the top of your head, because I don't, uh, what that pool of money was?
Remember, these are, these other things are already budgeted in different areas. So, the money for something like the, the, uh, moving, the migrating of, of Transfinder, that was, that would come out of that pool we're talking about, it was somewhere in the twelve to fifteen thousand dollar range.
You'll be okay? Any questions? All right, Dave? More call please?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Delona?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Um, on motion one, I need to abstain on check two seven five eight. I'm gonna vote no on four, five, and six.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capella?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cass, you have, uh, filled in the grounds of signal.
I have eight items to move. Um, they all have to do with the upcoming projects at the, uh, schools, except for one of them. Starting out with the A, B, C, and D, these are, uh, the media center project coming up for various things that have to be done. Uh, first one is A, furniture at the, uh, for the media center. We're asking to approve the creative library concepts proposal for forty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Uh, next one is proposal from the treadway corp for walls and doors, thirty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and four cents. C is to approve the electric, electrical services for the media center from Oriamo Electrical LLC in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. And the last one for review here is, uh, proposal from Roxbury Flooring for installing the floors at the media center at a cost of ten thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, the next item, uh, we had, uh, some good discussions on about, uh, joining with the, up with the Guard State Coalition of Schools at a cost of twenty-five hundred dollars for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. For those that may not remember, this is a, uh, an organization that lobbies on behalf of the suburban school districts regarding the unfunded mandates and the high property taxes, which is a tremendous financial burden to the, uh, to our schools. So, um, I highly recommend that the board get behind that and approve it. Um, the next two, F and G, we have work being done at Lakeview School. We got the resurfacing asphalt milling of the existing park along Broadway at various locations in the amount of a hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred and six dollars and fifty-six cents. And item G is to approve damage destruction, replace the pavement at Lakeview School at a cost of seven thousand, two hundred dollars. And that repair is gonna be in the, uh, receiving area of, of the school. Last item is, uh, for Riverview School to approve proposal from Roxbury Flooring for the purpose of installing floors, flooring at the Riverview School trailers, the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
One second.
I had a couple of questions. On D, I noticed that, it's a small thing, but you went with vinyl. So we're gonna do vinyl flooring. I know in the Valley View, we did the carpet tiles, right?
We did carpet tiles and that vinyl plank flooring, or it looks kinda like wood, that's the same thing.
So it's the same...
Same floor, yeah.
But there is gonna be carpet tiles?
There'll be carpet, tiles, yeah, and, and the, uh...
Oh, balanced carpet tile, sorry, got it.
Be like a walkway?
Yeah, I got it.
It's like the high-traffic area.
Yeah, I got it, okay. Um, the other question I had on H, do we really wanna spend three thousand dollars to put carpet into trailers that we're trying to get rid of?
Well, they're really shot, like, totally shot. And they're used for parents and things like that to come in, and we're gonna need them for probably two years. So, yeah, I feel the same way, I understand, but we can't leave it the way it is now, it's even tripping hats. We have, we actually have tape on the floors holding the carpet down, so it doesn't, I mean, all over the floor there's tape. So it's just shot.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question.
Duct tape and electric tape. And we, and we did tell them to give us the lowest, like, a lower quality, like, that's not ten-year carpet. We, one of the lowest quality, the cheapest kind of flooring we could use, cuz we know we just have to get through about two years.
Okay. And then the final question is on F and G. Well, I, I thought we talked about not moving forward with that if there was any possibility we were gonna do construction at Lakeview.
So that's why, F, if you remember, we had two hundred and fifty thousand budgeted for that, and we were gonna do all of it. But we decided, which I think is a good idea for two reasons. One, we're gonna only do up to about the flagpole, goes a little bit further than the flagpole. We're gonna leave the upper lot, so all the heavy machinery, if we do do it, would come in through Bertrand anyway. That's the way they did it the last time, so we're not gonna touch anything over there. I also think a positive byproduct of that is maybe we can get five more years at an upper lot in the back and then kinda be off a cycle, so that the next board that's sitting here twenty years from now might, it would be, it would be good if they could only have to do a piece of it instead of all, just like we do on roofs. So that was the purpose of doing it that way. And the second one for G is because that wasn't included in the first quote, because we didn't tell them to do that, but it, it looked, it's really all deteriorated, it needs to be done.
So, a couple of comments, I think, um, I'm still concerned that if we do decide to do construction at Lakeview, that even doing the bottom lot, it's kinda like we did the sidewalk and then we had trucks drive on it to do the roof, which was a nightmare to clean up and a disaster, as opposed to just saying, let's wait. So, I mean, I, I still feel like I drive through that Lakeview parking lot on a regular basis and although it's not in great shape, I don't feel like I'm hitting potmills. So, I, I mean, I'd be okay saying, let's wait altogether. All you need is one contractor to not realize he's supposed to come in the other entrance and now he drives a big truck through or something and damages the parking lot and we're upset because we just spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and have damage on the parking lot. That's just the way I feel, that's one thing. The other thing I would say is, is there any way we could move the receiving area and the dumpster area at Lakeview? It looks like crap all the time, the gates are always broken because the garbage trucks are like backing into it. It's right as you practically drive up to the building. So if we're gonna spend money on it, is there any possibility to potentially move it to a location that's not as in-your-face when you pull to the building?
That's a good, good point, so we did, we did consider that. I, I don't know, I'm gonna have to add, have to ask our, our architects to decide that. The receiving area is there, so I don't, I don't think we could move to receiving area. You know, like, it's a, it's a punch out on the wall.
Yeah, or a garage.
But the garbage, maybe.
Yeah, the garbage is really what we're worried about. And we just recently, I think, in the last like couple of years, replaced that fencing or at least fixed it. And every time I drive by there, the fence is half fallen off and I'm sure it's because the garbage trucks are hitting it.
They just hit it and fixed it again, I know.
Yeah, it just is what it is, I mean, it's just a, it, it's always gonna be like that no matter what you have around a dumpster. It'd just be nice if it wasn't like, as soon as you drive to the building, being like, hey, welcome to our school, here's the flagpole and there's the dumpster.
Yeah, you're right.
So I, it's just, if we could look at that, I, and I, I, I still am very concerned about spending money on resurfacing something if there's any possibility that we're gonna have major machinery, unless we're at a spot where we just said we gotta get it done. Now, unfortunately, our backs are probably against the wall here, because if we wanna get it done this summer, we have to approve it and get it done. But, I mean, I feel like we're, I, I don't wanna wait on things, but we've got, just got the, getting the Ross Haber report this week. Uh, if, if that Ross Haber report and then the, I, I just don't know how long it's gonna take to get the, the architect report. If that, I don't know, I, I'm just, I'm very concerned about spending money. I, I really have not been happy with the way that the con, the cement work was done up at Lakeview. There's still, it looks like they dropped tarps on it and it was still wet or something, doesn't look good. And then, like I said, there was trucks driving all over it cuz they had to do roof work, so...
How long is it gonna take them to do that project? What's their estimated timeline? Take a couple of weeks. So is there something we could defer a little bit warmer for later, after we look at the demographic report? Maybe, uh, I don't know if we'll be able to make a decision at that point of what we wanna do with the school, maybe, you know, just hold the stuff? Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't think, I don't think it's imperative that we do it today, but I would think that you have to do it at the next meeting at the latest, just to get on their docket. You know, just cuz it's late, it'll be late by then and the, this is all they do, is pay for school.
I was gonna say, they got co-op contacts, so they, yeah, they're, if you, if you wait, that's the problem, Don, and I hear you, I agree with Don, but if you wait, yeah, it's gonna end up being, okay, you're at the bottom of the list and if you're not done by the end of school, the school starts, sorry, that's happened to us before.
Yeah. Well, we can move this, we can move this off until the June twelfth meeting. I don't think I would wait till the nineteenth, and then if we're still in the, in the holding pattern, then maybe we just wait. This was, this, the, the reason for this one was, this is like a three-year process. We did some site work the first time, second time, more site work, and now we were gonna move on to the final, uh, surfacing. But you're right, there is a chance, obviously, but, um, from what I was told, all, all the heavy machinery came in through the Bertrand, didn't come in through the other door. You know, obviously, is it possible that somebody would make a mistake? I'm sure.
What's everybody's feeling about this? Should we, uh, put it off to Jim?
I'd prefer to...
Yeah, I'd put it off, and I know, I'd put it off as well. You know, at this point, I mean, you make it, you know, we're talking about renovations in schools, I, you know, I don't know if it, now would be the time to look at relocating the dumpster area? You know, if you're gonna be doing more work at the school in the future, I mean, but that certainly should be looked, looked in there. Looked into, I mean, you know, I'm glad Mike brought that up, we've talked and passed it a million, you know, a million times. I don't know where they put it, maybe up the hill someplace?
And then even the hall or...
Oh, the other thing to, I mean, if, if we wait another two weeks, if they can't, if it doesn't look like they can get, get it done by the end of the summer, then I guess we'd have to postpone it.
But I think so.
I mean, is your, is your feeling that, I mean, there's no real safety concerns at this point?
No.
With that, with that part of the line?
No. It's just, it's just beyond its useful life. But there's no reason why we can't put it off till the twelfth. Probably if we, if we don't decide on the twelfth, then it'll be time to just tell the guy, you know, get another work and most likely we're not gonna do it this summer.
Alright, so, uh, I, I guess we'll have to amend the, uh, the motion to, uh, defer F and G.
Just vote no on F and G, that way we can just put it back on instead of table it, cuz it's more, it's more work.
That works. I wanted to know what the heck a total wood fuel asphalt, uh, uh, cost adjustment was, why adding ten thousand dollars to the bill?
Yeah, that, that has to do with the, uh, the actual makeup of it, to like, the cost of...
It's just silly to me, cuz it's one forty-four, then it's another eleven, then they give you a four percent discount. I mean, it, it's, I don't know, just the whole thing seems like a number, a number is going to...
Yeah.
So, just remind and clarify, so we're postponing it to wait on the Haber report? Or, like, the field, the ball field, or, like, what were we thinking? Like, or, were we gonna try to do it this summer? Or, like, I'm thinking, even if we approved it, you don't have to schedule it yet. Like, I'm not sure, is it a two-week deferment or like till next year?
I think, my whole thing was, I'd like to see if we could try to get some idea from the build, the architect, to say, listen, I'm gonna recommend something more at Riverview. Or, there's a good possibility it's gonna be at Lakeview. I prefer not to approve something and then tell Steve, like, hey Steve, we're gonna approve it, but please don't do it. It's like, if we approve it, then I wanna tell him to go do it. But I, I'd like to see, obviously we need the Ross Haber report and then that'll then go on to the architect, but it sounds like some of the preliminary work for these, Steve, you said based upon what you've already heard. You don't think we're gonna need, you know, we'll be able to do a project now that will sustain what we have for the kids coming in. So obviously, you've got an idea of some preliminary numbers already, and you've already talked to the architect about those preliminary numbers.
What you mean, like, I'm talking about, I don't, I'm not talking about with our own money, I think, I meant, I meant an addition to that.
Yes, but that, and that's my point. If they come back and say, listen, we're good at Riverview, because that's where you would, you know, you as administration, you would prefer to have it at Riverview and balance out the kids, whatever. If that's the case, then I think I feel comfortable with it for Lakeview. If they come back and go, it's fifty-fifty, or Lakeview's a better spot for the additional space, then...
It's a different story.
Yeah, yeah. That makes sense?
Well, let's see, let's see, I don't think, I don't think waiting till the twelfth is a big deal. After that, though, it's probably, he'll probably move on to other customers, but the twelfth is probably okay.
So then, so then, my proposal would be, let's wait till the twelfth and let's push Ross and, is it EI now?
Yeah, Ross, Ross will be ready by this week and then EI should be ready by the twelfth, so we should have something.
Perfect. So at least we have preliminary idea, yeah.
Is that possible? Sounds like it'll be a stretch, but it's, it's realistic to get some idea about it.
And if it's not, if there's no downside, if Steve doesn't think there's a big downside to not locking in that contract yet, then we'll wait.
Okay, alright, everybody good?
I would like to, uh, if, Steve, if you could find out what they're planning on, how they're planning on disposing of the millings. If I remember correctly, the, uh, contract said something like nine thousand dollars to dispose of the millings. Frequently, companies like this use the millings to provide a base course at another job. And it would be kind of annoying to me for us to pay nine thousand bucks to get rid of it and then to get paid again for somebody else because they're bringing in Phil for a base course. Uh, you know, they're, they're getting paid twice for something that we're paying to get rid of, that, that would kind of annoy me.
And it is nine, it is nine thousand.
I think that's for trucking, though, right?
No, well, wait, dis, no, disposal of millings, nine thousand.
Truck, truck.
Costing for millings, six thousand. So it is a separate, I mean, there is a line item disposals.
I'll find out. Thank you.
Okay. All right, everyone's good? So I'll call first.
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, yes, on A through E and H, no on F and G.
Mr. Cass?
Yes, no on F and G.
Mrs. Delona?
Yes, except for F and G, no for F and G.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes, except no on E F and G.
E, F and G. Mr. Lord?
Uh, yes, no, yes for all but F and G, no on F and G.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes, for all except F and G, no on F and G.
Mr. Capella?
Yes, for all but no on F and G.
Okay, now it's a good response.
I have some information on the playground event. We raised, uh, five thousand one hundred ninety dollars. You know, I'd be a little bit less so as we deduct the cost of the snacks, but it was a, uh, well-attended event. The, the kids that were there decided to blast and we enjoyed all the volunteers that played on the Devil All-Star team. Nobody got injured. They did a great, they did a great job. So it was a, uh, just a fun time for everybody and paid a good amount of money for the playground initiative. I heard there was a Board of Ed president who dumped the ball.
Yeah, that definitely did not happen. The Board of Ed president barely stayed on his feet, but I consider that a win. Uh, no, we had a lot of teachers that played. Uh, I sent an email out today thanking them all. And it was, it was a great event. The kids had, the kids did have a great time. I would definitely do it again if, uh, if the Playground Committee or someone else decides to bring the Wizard of Oz back. It's, uh, it's definitely, definitely good. Also, uh, just want to, Valley View wrapped up the Wizard of Oz this weekend. Uh, great shows. I know some of you came out to see it. It was very well-attended. I believe they sold out Friday and Saturday night. It was really, uh, pass the check. So congratulations to them. They're doing a lot of hard work. The, uh, the, uh, I think the, you know, the Parents Association put in a lot of time and effort as well as all the teachers. And they really did, they passed the check.
Um, just as a follow-up to our ongoing discussion about, um, additional development of building in town and affordable housing and how that all kind of plays in. Um, I've spent some time doing additional research on kind of where, uh, the town is and that plan that we've all seen, the, the ten-year plan, it's, I think it's two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-five was released in two thousand sixteen from the town. Um, and so that is part of a declaratory judgment that the town has submitted to Morris County Supreme Court. Um, and has been ongoing since two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen. Um, so based upon what I can see, and this is completely my interpretation of kind of looking at this, not anybody from the town and or, uh, legally, but, um, I would say that, um, and Steve mentioned this last meeting, I would say that, um, that that plan that you see, um, will most likely be all built by two thousand twenty-five within this town or shortly thereafter. Um, the town has sent that to the court as their proposal, so I see no reason why either the court's gonna come back and say, no, you have to do less. Or, um, the town is going to deny those projects as they come forward because it's their plan that they submitted to the, the courts. Um, sitting through a lot of the meetings, the, um, courts have not been as favorable as towns would like as far as jud, judgments, um, uh, for affordable housing. So, um, I think that's probably what I would call, in my personal opinion, as best-case scenario.
The three hundred?
Yeah, best-case scenario meaning the lowest number. Um, that includes five projects, uh, Escaline Lake, which is already built. Station Road, which is, or the Redmond Press or slash Station Road, uh, uh, building, which is currently being debated by, I think, the Planning Board, um, Zoning Board and the Town Council right now. Uh, a project on Franklin Road that I believe is the largest of them. I think it's a hundred or a hundred fifty.
About one thirty-five is it now?
Okay.
Ramesses seats.
Yep. And then finally, a, a development off of Z, off, off Castor Line that I believe is sixty or something like that. Yep. Um, and then finally, a smaller group home, um.
By the food town, I think.
Where that one's going, I don't know.
That, where, where Lake Lenora is, which I think is by the food town.
Okay. So those are the five projects that are on there. Two out of the five, or two of the remaining four, let's say, are what's called intervenors, meaning they have filed suit with the town as a builder's remedy, remedy um, for much larger projects than what the town has in that proposal. So therefore, that's why I would say, in my opinion, there, that's the conservative end of where those projects would go. For instance, the property that's by me that is proposed by the town for sixty, the builder, I believe, has asked for two hundred and forty units to be built on that property. Just to give you an idea of the exponential difference between what builders are asking for and what the town is, is pushing for, what they think is appropriate. Um, so just to get an idea of kind of as we talked to Ross, and I'm glad, I'm really glad that we've decided to kind of go down that road of getting an idea from him because I believe, like I said, these are at least conservative. The good part is, is that the first two projects have moved along and haven't been forced into larger projects than what the town has in that proposal. So, um, hopefully, the rest of the projects will maintain a, a smaller scope, um, of projects. So, and I know the town continues to get projects sent to them for requests. I hear at least through a lot of people that builders are always coming to them for large projects in town. And they're trying to do what they think is best for the township. Um, and as best they can, they will continue to give us the information they have, understanding that this is all in the court system and unfortunately, the state legislator, legislature has not, um, been willing to give additional, um, direction to the towns. And everybody gets stuck in these lawsuits, so. But the town has been forthcoming with the information that they feel is appropriate, helping to kind of guide what we think we are gonna need as a district because it's a big, it could be a big change, so. But that's, by the way, that's, it doesn't end in two thousand twenty-five, so it's not like that just ends there. That, my guess is we'll see another ten-year plan at some point, uh, closer to two thousand twenty-five, so. But I think we can only plan for what we know about, and what we know about right now is that plan that they've given us. So I'm glad we've taken that and brought it to Ross and hopefully get an idea from him where we think the student population coming out of those, those buildings are.
I would agree that it's gonna be important for us to get somebody else's opinion on what the numbers coming out of those units are because the town's best guess on, what is it, Escaline, was zero. And we got eight, which is infinitely more students than they projected. I mean, it's not a factor, it's, so, you know, we need to be prepared for something.
And the other thing I did want to mention too is that, um, as we all know, Escaline Lake project was a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes. Um, none of the other proposals right now are a pilot. However, they have redesignated the Redmond Press facility as a redevelopment site, I believe it's called. Um, which does allow them to discuss a pilot. So I have given my one-of-seven personal opinion to several people on administration within the town and Town Council, stating that as a resident and as a Board of Ed member, I do not personally support a pilot considering, I would understand if the town had an obligation for housing and nobody was coming to them and saying, I want to build housing. But they've got people coming to them, proposal for housing. Um, so therefore, um, pilot really is detrimental to, uh, our district. Uh, especially when you talk about larger projects and projects that are not one-bedroom apartments near a railroad station that we already got eight students out of, when you start talking about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and, you know, another, I think it was two hundred and forty was ballpark. I think I figured out from what's left, something like that, two hundred, two hundred and forty, something like that, Steve?
Yeah, that's right.
So, I mean, you start talking about those could be much larger numbers coming out of them when you're talking two- or three-bedroom apartments or.
The condos. The condos alone, preliminary numbers you're just looking at are in the ninety-two-hundred range.
Of students coming out?
Not all at once, obviously.
Yeah. But that's, so, I mean, that's, that's the kind of stuff that's important. And if we have that many students coming out, even if it's half that many coming out initially, if you have forty-five kids coming out, let's say, of that dish, of that, and you have zero money coming, that's your, zero additional money coming in, uh, to the district.
I'm sorry, I was talking about the one by Knowles, not, not.
Yeah, that's the hundred and sixty.
But that's not, that's not a pilot, though, right? That's.
It's, uh, I, I mean, none of them, the only one that has been discussed right now in the word pilot has come out, I think, at, I think at a public meeting, at least discussion about it, has been Redmond Press. Not that anybody's in support of it, but, um, I would suggest as all of us as taxpayers and citizens, reach out, uh, and discuss with your ward council person as to how you feel about that or others. Because I personally feel like that is detrimental to, um, the Board of Education, so.
So Mike, I was gonna say, first of all, thank you for all the additional time and effort you are putting in to understand this. Um, and in your opinion, or, you know, Steve, in your opinion, is there some weight validity to, yes, I can, as a taxpayer, call my ward representative, but is there anything that the board as a unit can say that would hold sway since it's impacting the schools?
Probably could pass one of those resolutions.
Yeah, I mean, do you think that's prudent or not?
I, I, I think at this point, I, I don't know if we need to go to that level. I think a friendly conversation with some of the.
You know.
We've had some offline conversations, maybe a more formal kind of conversation just about it, but as long as we agree as a board, that's how we feel, I mean.
Right, that's why, if you think it's prudent, I don't know how it is prudent, but.
Let me tie, let me tie down the mic some little bit because we had some conversations. One was after a conversation about the, uh, Redmond Press being designated a site in need of rehabilitation and asked Matt, is there ever a reason to designate something a site, uh, in need of rehabilitation without necessarily going to a pilot? Or is it really just the first step to go into a pilot? And the answer was, no, you really, there's nothing it gets you other than basically the ability to make a pilot. So it does seem like the roadmap to that, Ross, to that. So I think our voices certainly need to be heard, this, individually or as a board.
I don't think the other projects can be pilots, though, because it has to be redevelopment, right? I mean, this is undeveloped land. It has to be like some kind of a environmental problem.
Usually, right, you, you, remediation or infrastructure, a lot of times.
Or deterioration.
But because it can also have to do with, uh, infrastructure, like you can, you know, in, in need of development.
In need of development.
Yeah, so I mean, it can, it can even go to sewers, you know, those, those kinds of things count. Um, the other thing actually I wanted to mention was, I went to the Governance Three, um, session at, um, Mount Lakes and it's all about student achievement. And one of the things they had in there was, um, a book by David Dante Trout from Rutgers Law School. And it has to do with New Jersey land laws, use laws and effect on achievement, student achievement. And one of the recommendations or questions was, has a member of your board been appointed to represent the board in your community's planning board or zoning? Which is apparently something boards are doing more of lately. Um, it's an interesting idea. Maybe something for further discussion.
That's not a bad idea. It's probably a good first step before doing a resolution like that. And maybe, maybe a joint council, board meeting too. A joint, like, it's totally on the topic of redevelopment.
I, I could tell you that I've spoken to several people individually that have told me that they are not in support of making that Redmond Press a pilot. Um, there is an entire committee they're putting together to talk about that, uh, that though. And it's one of those things that, um, if it's mentioned to the builder, it's a, you know, builders get pretty excited about pilots.
That's an interesting question. You talked about that council committee, right, that's pretty formal. What's the possibility of a board member being like?
That's a good question. I, I think, I think we probably need to just sit down with, with Mayor Administrator, maybe, I don't know, maybe the Council President, just to sit down and say, hey, let's have a conversation about this and talk about it kind of more formally as opposed to kind of one-off. I've had a lot of one-off conversations, but I think it's worthwhile. It's, it's a, it's a big concern of mine. Like I said, I think, I think no matter what, the town's gonna be forced to build at least what's on that plan. But, um, having a pilot in there adds a whole other wrench into our finances that we, uh, that we don't expect, so.
That's a conversation which should happen to them.
If you'd like, we can, I can send an email to them saying, we'd like to get three board members, their council president, mayor, maybe another board, another council member. Want to do that?
Sure.
Sometime after we get back our reports.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Toward the end of June?
I, and I do think, by the way, at least that, like I said, the one-off conversations I had, that the council's actually gonna be appreciative of the reports that we're doing. Because Mariana, I, you mentioned it earlier, Escaline Lake. I, I think that their estimate of zero was based on no professional, uh, report or anything other than, in fact, what this person, what some people have told me is, I think we just get that information from the builder.
Yeah.
Well, that's not really a good source when.
That is where I sat in the audience at the meeting when that builder presented. And he talked about the building that was similar in another town right by a train station. And at that price point, how many people were willing to, you know, share a bedroom with their children while paying that kind of rent and everything? And, you know, there was a certain amount of it that you could buy into or whatever. Yes, I'm not saying that they put forward, but that is the number that was put forward.
Yep. But they don't get that, they're not, because they probably don't have as much of a vested interest in it. They're not doing reports like we are to determine.
Right, well, and at that point, you gotta remember, right? And you figure out the economics of the pilot, actually, the town gets more money than they would get from a pilot, right? Because all of the money's going to them. Nothing's going to the county, nothing's going to us. So, I don't know, you can't say conflict of interest, but it is, all the, they have all the cards. Yeah.
But it phases in too. It's a, it's very interesting. I want to say Escaline Lake is paying, and this is off the top of my head, so don't quote me on this, but somewhere around fifty thousand dollars in taxes this year altogether for the whole hundred units. But it phases in.
But it phases.
And they did, I mean, they, they have done a lot. I will say that even sitting through the council meetings, um, there's actually a strip. I guess the, the builder had done, uh, had paved up to a certain point on Escaline Lake Road or whatever the road is that it's on. And then I guess there was, there was a section from where they ended their paving to the actual railroad track that was, wasn't scheduled to be paved for another couple of years, but it was in pretty rough shape. The builder said, how much will it be? I think it was thirty thousand dollars. And the builders actually donated the money to the town and the town is gonna, you know, that, just, basically, they're gonna pay for it is more or less what they said. So the builder is trying to do certain things, but, um, I don't think he donated any money, any money to the Board of Ed for those eight students, though.
They, they did, uh, they do advertise on our Friday folder, we get a thousand dollars a year out of that.
Yeah. Thousand dollars a year times eight or divided by eight students. Anyway, sorry, it was a long report, but, um, just.
Uh, anything else? I know we, uh, we still, we keep receiving substandard space on our discussion ends as some.
I think that.
We come back to, but we.
Talked about it with the builder, I think.
I think so, yeah. Unless anyone else has anything to add there? All right, if everyone's done, then I'll bring it back to public comments. And we are open for public comments at, uh, nine forty-one P M. Anything at all remain to the district, please come on up and just announce your name and address for the record and sign the form. Thank you.
Patrick, do you have a, do you have a mic? Please, so it gets picked up.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Lyle Beck, live over Gardner Road, uh, one son over at Riverview. Next year, I'll have two sons over at Riverview. Um, I brought this issue up with some people here. Um, Superintendent Forte was very nice to meet me last week with Chief Wagner and go over the new class-three officer. Um, also spoke to Michael Anderson a little bit. Um, just came here to listen tonight mostly. Um, I haven't been to a school board meeting before. I have been to a council board meeting. Um, thank you very much for your service because this is difficult. These are not fun nights, but that's why there's one other person here, uh, listening as well. Um, but after listening to you tonight and hearing the care that everybody takes and going through the budget with minutia and how we're gonna spend three thousand dollars, um, I, I thought that this was a big enough number that maybe it would grab your attention again and maybe I could just share my feelings. Um, I was very surprised to read, um, about the class-three officer coming into Denville, it was something new. I, I was not at the strategic planning meetings and that is my fault and I should have. Um, it struck me very viscerally. At first, I have learned a lot about the issue. At first, I have learned a lot about the issue, and I do not think that there's enough good data out there on school resource officers, first and foremost, and this class three officer is something that is completely new. Found out a lot of information from Superintendent Forte and Chief Wagner, especially how they plan to implement that. I do believe that everybody has good intentions, and I think we're all coming from the same place of trying to protect our children. My personal feelings is that this is somewhat maybe misguided or looking into the wrong places. We're solving a problem that everybody looks and says, you know, you hear that, you say, hey, if something happens, I want a gun there, and those are the rosy scenarios. And maybe it's just my mind, but I think we have to be comfortable with all the unintended consequences that come with something like this as well, and not just those best-case scenarios. So I think there are some moral and ethical issues involved with having a gun in the school. I prefer schools to be a safe haven where kids can go. You know, you can go back to lean on me with Joe Clark, you can go back to other things. But, but the idea that this is a place where kids can go, where they can not have that violence. The intention is obviously not to have any of that violence and really for those officers to be a friend to the children and give them somebody to go to. But maybe that abdicates our responsibility as parents and maybe some of the educator's roles, where that would have been a counselor that they would have gone to and built that relationship. Maybe it provides another layer in between, you know, more qualified personnel. Not that this officer isn't qualified, but, you know, people who deal with the kids day in and day out and who really understand some of those issues, or the school administrators that really should be the first line of defense and brings it right into a police matter. I, I really would just urge everybody to consider that, to think about it again tonight. You know, really explore whether you're comfortable with it. The conversations that I've had with people, they don't go into depth on it. So really, that, that's what I'm here for. I just want to urge you to, to think about it, think about some of those unintended consequences. And are we comfortable with everything that comes with that? One of the other things that came out of my meeting with Chief Wagner and Superintendent Forte is, and I also spoke with the guidance counselor up at Morris Knowles, and a friend of mine who is a teacher at Mountain Lakes and the elementary school where they have a school resource officer full-time and had a lockdown last year, and all very positive feelings about school resource officers. I got a lot of that. This new officer sounds more like a security guard to me. They're not there to do the teaching that's involved with an SRO. They're not there to do some of that community outreach. This is really a security guard that we're hiring for our schools. I don't know if that's necessary in two elementary schools and middle school. I, I, I just don't see it for myself, but that's my personal feeling, and I just wanted that to be known and to be shared. And, you know, again, I just respectfully request that everybody take an extra minute to think about that tonight and some of the long-term effects of, of what we're bringing to our schools. Because I see that we have a lead officer now, now we add one class three officer. Maybe next year it's another class three officer so that all the schools are covered. And then maybe it builds up to an SRO, and we just continue to build this presence that maybe we don't want in our schools, and we should really tackle some of the tougher issues like mental health, like parental involvement that are really leading to the problems and not just treat the symptom. Thank you.
Mr. Beck, thank you for coming. I really appreciate you coming and speaking. I'm going to actually allow, if any of the board members would like to have an opinion, let me express what their thoughts are on this. Feel free. Help them out, anybody? If not, I'll just say, I'll say to you again, thanks for coming. Personally, one of the things I feel about the class three officer specifically is that it's one of those things that it is there for worst-case scenario. They, it's useless until it's priceless. And in this day and age, you, every, every time you hear about a school shooting, you hear, it couldn't happen here. I never thought it would be here. We have such a nice town. It couldn't happen in our elementary school. And it's not, it's not what happens in the school, it's who's coming into the school. And these are people that, you know, are outliers. You never know when they're going to be there, how they're going to be there, what's going to happen. So for me personally, again, I'm not speaking for all board members here, but I, you know, me personally, I feel like it is a necessary evil in the society we live in and the world we live in. And having a trained officer with a firearm in a school is not my first wish, but I do feel it's prudent in the world we live in. So again, that's just my feeling. But again, I thank you for your concerns, and I certainly understand them.
I would like to comment. I also appreciate you coming out and sharing your feelings. It's important for us to hear all points of view. For you to know, I mean, I sort of echo what Dino was saying. I've actually served on the board long enough that I believe I was on the board when Sandy Hook happened. And I've served, actually, I was the first board president to create the Security Committee that we have now and partner with the chief of police and other members of our community to look at our schools. And it has been, you're correct, a slow adding layers. And as the chief had said in those committee meetings, that there is no one cure-all for what may happen in a worst-case scenario. But these are things that we can do, and I'm not necessarily just talking about a school resource officer, which didn't exist then, as you know. I mean, a school resource officer did, a class three officer did. And as you're aware, that you stated, you know, we do have officers in our school teaching with the students through the LEAD program now. And it wasn't a decision I came to easily wanting this. But when you sit up here and you make decisions, and yes, it's about the education that the children are getting, but first and foremost, I believe we are charged with keeping everyone safe. And it's not in my skill set. As much as I can study and understand, and in all my years, in my 12, 13 years on the board, I've studied curriculum and served on the curriculum committee, I, it is, you know, the end of the day, keeping everybody secure in a situation. And I've sat in committee meetings where they had to come and explain certain policies that we have that I, we were like, no, that can't be what we should have in our policy. And they explained to us why with all their training, how they understand the dynamic of a situation so much better than we do. And so, yeah, it's not something, I don't know that this is of any comfort, but it's not something I came to easily or lightly worrying about, you know, not just the kids that sleep under my roof, but all the kids in the community that are in our care for a large portion of their day. So, so thank you for coming. I, I appreciate it.
I appreciate, I appreciate those comments. And as I told Superintendent Forte, I don't think there are any right answers here. So we're all coming from the same place. And again, I just hope everybody takes an extra minute and really thinks about some of those other angles that you may not have thought of because everybody has that best case. That's what pops up into our, our brains is that best-case scenario, that somebody's going to walk in the door and, you know, a trained officer.
And I personally agree completely with you, and I know I'm not supposed to get into a back and forth, so don't yell at me. I, I totally agree with you that, you know, that mental health is the place we should be, you know, attacking this problem for absolutely. But that's kind of outside our scope.
Absolutely, and I appreciate the job that everybody here has to do with. And again, I do want to point out Superintendent Forte for taking the time with me and explaining some of the larger issues and how it will be implemented here in Denville. And that meant a lot to me, be able to raise a question, get an answer, have a meeting with Superintendent Forte and Chief Wagner, and then be able to come here and be able to speak with you. So having an outlet for that and having a way to have that back and forth and that interaction is very meaningful, and that's why we live in a great town like Denville. So the difference of opinion aside, you know, we're all happy to be here and we're all doing the right thing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add real quick, I know Lyle and I spoke last week too, real quick. And, and I wanted to echo something that Mariana said and emphasize a little more. I've sat in on the committee meetings, Security Committee meetings. And those meetings, I would say, for a few days afterwards, I have my kids a lot tighter because it's really emotional to sit through and talk about the things that we do that are visible and not visible for security of our kids. And, and, you know, Mrs. Lindsay said something about, we're not experts. And actually, when, when Mr. Beck brought up this situation, I kind of thought about it even deeper. And I thought about the experience that Chief Wagner has and the entire police department here because they have eight schools in Denville. We're not a big town for eight schools. That's a lot of schools. Lakeview, Riverview, Valley View, St. Mary's, Morris Knowles, RoTech, Morris Catholic, and Celebrate the Children. That's a lot of schools. And when I look and say, you know, in some ways, we're lucky to have somebody who cares that much about our kids because with eight schools, I would say at least half the time I go to Lakeview during the day where I just pick up my kids or do something at school, I see a police car sitting out front of that school. And they're stopping by to see the kids. And my kids tell me all the time, oh, Officer Underwood was at the school today. I mean, they know them by name. I, I know I saw Mr. Beck actually at the police trading card event. I would say the relationship that our police department has with our kids is incredible. So although I think it's a necessary evil to have police more in our schools, more than I would ever like, I think our police department does the absolute best job I've ever seen on making it as comfortable for the students, for the community, as they can. So, but I appreciate you bringing it up. I, I will be honest with you, I think sometimes we, we look at things and you see us debate on $3,000 or $300 sometimes for a, a lot longer than some people would like to spend here at night. But we do it because we care about every dollar, every student, the safety, everything we do. But we don't always see every single angle. So if you see things that, you know, in a different way, it's great. Because although I still think that it's the best thing, I think now I go, well, we really should talk a little bit more about how we're going to implement it. And now we talk about how we're going to use that, what, who the person is, because that person means a big difference. We talk about the great police officers we have, we've got to make sure we get a great person for that role. So thank you for bringing it up. Thank you for coming. Because it, it means a lot to me when I hear from people on how they feel, so thank you very much.
Mr. Duarte, you have, you have to bring us home.
I'll be brief, I promise.
Name it, address, breakfast.
Paulus Duarte, 83 Missland Road. As you all know, as a former board member, I was never in favor of that idea. I'm still not. I don't know if you guys have old parents on this, I know you've done surveys in the past. I pretty much take them all, I'm not sure if I remember anything about the school resource officer. But at any rate, I'm just, it's not something I'm in favor of. You know, you're introducing somebody with a gun to the school. Over top, you know, who knows what's going to be inside that guy's head? Things have gotten, gotten wrong in the past with people that had been entrusted with weapons, right? So that's my two cents. The other thing about SHI and the stuff you guys are doing on the AT side, because you know, I hear you perk up on that. Are those rates that you're paying them already pre-negotiated in the contract that you have with them?
Yes. When we, when they do, when they do, when they do things like, there's different rates though. So there's all different rates depending on the level of guy. Yeah. So all the rates that we have are in the contract, yes.
And no opportunity for milling and paving, like shared services with the town since they're always constantly rolling through different streets to use the same people that they use?
No, I talked to the town about it. We got a great deal from Sky and Thomas River, and they were pretty impressed with our deal. So, yeah, we already talked to them about that.
So I'm just talking to the town and see if they can renegotiate.
Maybe.
That was it, thank you.
Hey, actually, Steve, along those lines, I know that in that quote from Diamond, it did talk about striking. We have Denville line painting in town that goes down the street from me that, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's one of those things. It, sometimes it gets down to the point of it's such a small job or something like that that they really can't have...
They won't come out for our stuff. They do like roads and stuff. They, we've asked them before.
This is a 60 human dollar outline, Adam, strike me.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they, they, they do, I know people, I see them like two hours away doing jobs, so they do a lot of big jobs, yeah. Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. If there's no one else, which does it from here again. We'll close the public comment at 9:58. We don't need executives?
I have a couple of things that I either need to talk to the negotiating committee or the board's holdout, because the governor's to train back at the 11th. And I think I really need to talk to either the board's hold or the board committee about it. And I think it needs to be an executive session, or it's going to be the entire board.
I think you should be the negotiation team. Since the movement's not a negotiation.
I mean, I, I don't think you're going to take very long, but I think it's, there's a couple of things that I don't think I can talk about.
It's not tall, it has to be a subset of negotiation committee, that's going to be more.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so it'll have to be two, two, I think. Yeah, okay, we'll do it in the, we'll do it with a, with a subset of the negotiation committee.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, I will take a motion for adjournment.
Will we adjourn?
Take it. All right, I'll give it to, I'll give it to Mr. Anderson. He seems to want it more. Mr. Anderson, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we are done at, ooh, 9:59. I just beat 10 o'clock. Thank you, everybody.